So he's seated, right?
Tell Bob to put his camera down.
Yeah.
Dave, can we get Bob to put his camera down?
So Jack Stary's not going to show up?
Anytime you guys are ready to go.
Okay. Right, right, okay, okay. Right, and Cynthia. Okay. It's seven o'clock, let's call the meeting to order. And it's the 23rd of February, seven o'clock. And I'd like to do a roll call, starting down here with Kurt.
Kurt Peterson, alternate.
Cynthia Roman.
Regular member, right?
Regular member.
Barbara Sequenzia.
Barbara Sequenzia, alternate pending.
Robert Casati, can you hear me? Bob? I can see his head, but...
Bob muted.
He's muted, yeah, I see that. Bob Casati, are you present?
Bob, can you hear us? John, can you hear us? Yes.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, and Bob, I think is muted. Bob, can you hear us? Okay.
Can you move your camera, Bob?
You can just see the top of your head, Bob.
Maybe I can have Bob call me, and I can try to work through.
Okay.
He can hear?
Hey Bob, it's Dan. I'll give you my cellphone number, and you can give me a call, and I can try to IT this, whatever problem you're having. Does that sound good? Put your hand over your head again, if you... All right. My number's 860-930-4422. And give me a call, and we'll see if we can troubleshoot this with you.
Don't move his camera, so he can see his face.
We'll get there.
It seems like if he moves his camera down, you might be able to see him.
Do I need to wait?
Are you using a laptop, or an iPad, or what are you using?
Is that Kelly, Carrie?
Yeah, it's me, Carrie.
Bob, my number was 860-930-4422. Here we go.
Oh, there he is.
Do we need to wait until this is...
Please forget you heard my cellphone number. Yeah, some people, I admit that was this. You got me, I'll be up then, just don't call early in the morning.
Do I need to wait until he's on?
If we don't have sound from him, and he can't participate, I would...
Have to wait.
Oh, here we go.
Well, he should be on the internet.
It just seems like you've got the wrong positioning. All we're seeing is the top of his head.
Yeah, so one thing is your camera's pointed up. Do you know if your microphone's not working? Is that the problem? Okay, hold on a second. Microphone, such as microphone. Would you want to try to troubleshoot this a little bit? Here, I'm bringing in some help here. Hold on one second.
Leave him on your phone, and put him on speaker.
Yeah, I'll ask Carrie, yeah.
Dan, it just seems to me, and I could probably hack back at home. He's too far away from the microphone, and his camera and everything is just, is all pointed up.
He's getting a message saying his microphone's not working on his computer. So I did hand it, my phone, over to one of our IT people to try to troubleshoot with him quick. Now, if he has issues, could we... Could we have him participate via the phone for his audio, or...
I think he can, but I think he ought to at least adjust the camera, so that we can see him.
Yeah, we will certainly have him do that. Regardless, we'll see if we can troubleshoot this quickly. And if that's a problem, we'll just have him adjust the camera.
Okay. If you go to the bottom right-hand corner of your screen, you might be able to access your sound settings.
Yeah, I'm no expert, but...
I got the best two people in the room on this.
All right.
So, imagine your microphone is not set up. Okay, is... Are you using a headset, or is it... Is it just like an open mic system on your desktop?
I should have tested this with him earlier, because I got, like, we went into, got it into the Zoom.
Okay. It might be problematic, seeing as it's off for itself. Sometimes it has, like, updates that postpone this. Okay, if you click on the speaker setting, you might be able to activate the speakers. I'm not sure if that's... Could you try speaking to the speakers of the microphone? No, we're not getting anything. For now, it might be better you could communicate through the chat system. Are you able to access that?
Well, what we'll do is obviously put my phone up through the mic and say that works.
Okay, wait, I'm going to hand you back to Mr. Bure now.
It's not comfortable, Mr. Bure.
Hey Bob. Hey, so, all right, this is what we'll do. If you could just tilt your camera down, so we can see your face, and then I'm going to put my phone up against the microphone, and have you communicate through the phone. So we'll kind of have a dual system here. Can you push it down a little more? All we can see is the top of your head.
Getting better, there we go. Getting better.
All right, we got, we got...
Half of your face.
We got, we got half of your face. You can't tilt it down anymore? Okay, well, we'll have to, we'll have to work with that, and then I'll put you up to the mic, and hopefully that works.
Dan, do you have a forum without him?
No.
Uh, we have, we... We only have four, Carrie, and I wouldn't recommend any of our applicants to proceed with four.
No, obviously it's their choice.
Right.
I'm just saying, we obviously have to be able to hear him and see him.
All right, so let me see if I can test Bob on this mic, and if that's sufficient. We'll proceed, if not, we may have an issue. Hey, Bob, can you try speaking to the mic? Or into the phone?
Yeah, I'm on the phone now.
John, okay, did you hear that?
Yeah, I heard it. But is Zoom should have a phone number, calling option, so he could, you know, you could, you could on-screen.
Well, his on-screen's not picking him up anyway, so we won't have... Oh, okay.
Yeah, but if his microphone's not working...
Yeah, if his mic's not, well, he could call him with his phone, and it would come over our sound system. I don't, I don't think I set up a phone number, John, when I did the Zoom meeting. All right, Bob, we're working on a phone number for you.
Do we, if, if, if the case, these two applications aren't necessarily needed, of, of four?
Yeah, they both need four.
They both need four? I don't think it's a majority, because they're not, they're not...
Supermajority, still a supermajority on the appeal.
I just, I wasn't sure.
Well, yeah, I wouldn't recommend them, somebody to...
I don't, no, I wouldn't either.
Because it would go from, well, even if it wasn't, it would go from two noes to...
All right, tell him to call, how to set up it.
Enter password.
All right, tell him to call into 342.
Hey Bob? Call into 342.
6705.
6705. And we're going to set you up on a...
A conference.
Yeah, we're going to set you up on a conference phone.
All right, and then...
All right, great.
And it's going to ask for your password.
Oh, wait, he just hung up.
I love the technical stuff, right?
Ah, Jesus Christ.
Oh, Bob, Bob, hang up, and let me call you, I forgot to give you the... Oh, what's the password, Dave?
6705.
6705 is the passcode.
6705 pound.
6705 pound is the passcode. Good work, Dave. It's a, it's a...
It would be better if I lowered his camera a little bit more, because doing that, cut off.
Carrie, he said he can't lower his camera anymore.
Really?
I guess.
Can he sit on a pillow chair?
Get him a phone book to sit on. We're not hearing him. He's not dialing in.
Uh-oh, he's on the phone. Bob, you want to call me back if you're having trouble? What was the number again?
The media ID number is 862-6700.
Right, that's the passcode. 342.
Yeah, we're trying to put him on a conference call, Carrie. And put that, put that on the mic.
Okay, I'm just wondering what the website shows.
Well, does the website have a number, Carrie?
That's just the password.
860-342-6700.
Oh, that's just the password, if we use it. Hey Bob? Did you have problems? Here, I'll give you to Dave on the conference call. All right, here's Dave.
Hey Bob? Yeah, just dial into the, I set up a conference bridge for you. It's 342-6705, and it's going to ask you for a password. So just put 6705 pound, and that'll get you... 860-342-6705. As a password. Yes, please.
Please, man.
Let's see. You try it down, what is the...
Enter password.
There you are. Bob, you there?
Hey Bob, it did work on our end. Hey Bob?
Can I make a suggestion? Has he been able to link in on prior occasions?
We have, we have not had to do a Zoom for any ZBA meetings before, Carrie. This is the first, he's done it. Oh, you have used it before? And you didn't have this problem?
Could he just try it again, sometimes...
Uh, Bob, I'm getting a suggestion for you to try to log out of the Zoom and log back in, and maybe that might, that might help.
If there's a setting that allows him, like, to ask, allow this app to use the mic, then...
Yeah, and, yeah, try logging back in, Bob, and if it asks you if the app can use the mic, you know, hit allow. Okay?
Use computer audio.
All right, bye.
Now you know that's all that's in my IP knowledge, that's it.
Well, hey, we're running through it all, right now. Carrie, how long should we keep trying to do this?
Well, I think, I think we... Do I hear him coming on? No. I, I, if we can't get him, he needs, we've only got three numbers, which is a forum.
We have four. We do have four.
Without him?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So then, at that point, I guess my argument would be, because both of these are appeals of CEO decisions.
I guess you're right.
Either you need four out of five to approve it, and so it would be up to the applicant.
Oh, so, because they would need four out of four, right? At that point? Yeah, okay. So I'll talk to the applicants, just in case now, to see what they're thinking, and then we'll, we'll make a, make a call.
So, yeah, it's up to you guys, obviously.
Technology grade.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Bob, you're on you, okay, there you go.
I don't pay now. Oh, wow, electronic prison booth.
Well, you do need to either get a taller chair, or move the camera, because they cannot see you because of the...
The problem is, the screen is elevated on the top of the...
Can you just...
You need to get a taller chair, and move it off. So, can move the computer off of the ledge?
You can sit back.
What's wrong with this?
We can't sit with your eyes on.
Oh, you can hear me, right?
Bob, try sitting back. Bob, try sit, leaning back in your chair. That's better. There you go.
Yeah, okay, Bob.
Don't move.
Don't move. All right.
We haven't had seats officially.
No, yet, no.
We just wanted to know, we didn't want to lose our place.
So our roll call, we're waiting on Rob, Robert Casati to say here. Are you here, Rob?
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm decided here.
All right, so we have one, two, three, four, five of us, this meeting. Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. A vote?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. I'm going to read the legal notice, and except, and the explanation of procedures.
Oh, yeah.
You have to seat McSeddon's yet.
To seat, seating of all for next, is that...
Oh, okay. So, because Jack Stary is not here. As a regu, he's a regular member. I'm going to seat Barbara Sequenzia and Cynthia Roman, not Cynthia Roman, I'm sorry, Kurt Peterson, as alternates on the board tonight.
Yeah, Kurt for, for Mike, yeah.
Barbara for...
Yeah, so just, you know, just say that you seat Kurt for Mike.
Okay. All right. We've accepted the agenda, and... Where are my motions? Christ. There it is.
Make time, yes.
Yep. We're opening this hearing on application 22-02 for 43 Goodrich Lane. It's a request to appeal a zoning permit denied by the zoning enforcement officer to construct a single-family dwelling. The application and property of John and Sally Anderson assessors map 76, lot 15-1, zone R25. At this point, applicants are invited to state their case. They need to come, person needs to come to the mic, speak clearly, and... Give their name and their address.
Rich, if you want to take the mic off the clip, if you can stand there.
Okay. Do you want to see that? Can you do that, can you see that?
Is that all right, sure. I haven't opened the public hearing yet.
I believe so. No, not in this, not in this case.
Okay, so I'm opening the public hearing, and...
Motion to open.
Motion to open, do I have to have the board accept their motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You all set? Okay, great. Good evening, I'm attorney Rich Corolla. I represent John and Sally Anderson, they're seated in the front row over there. I'm also resident of Portland. And we're here on this application. This is a denial of the zoning permit by the ZEO. And the basis of that denial was that because the lot that John and Sally are trying to get approved for a building lot, the ZEO said it doesn't lack, it lacks frontage on a town road. And I want to go through the history of this. We've been around the bend on this a couple times, and I know Carrie Olson, who's on the line, has discussed this with us a number of times. And I want to kind of go through the history of this a little bit with you, and explain to you why we think Goodrich Lane is a town road, and why this lot should be an approved building lot. why we think Goodrich Lane is a town road, and why this lot should be an approved building lot. So I wanna go back to how this got to be this way in the first place.
Madam Chairman, I don't mean to interrupt it, now, Rich Corella, I do not intend to interrupt, but there are, uh, board members who are on video that cannot see.
Uh, Rich, stand on this side of it, 'cause that's it, okay, now we can focus in on that.
Um, I think you can have to zoom in a bit, so I want to emphasize everybody can see it. Because I, I have to tell you right now, it's, it's not, it's not obvious. And I just, I just don't want to waste your time, um, the board members who are on the wall can't see it. A little closer to the camera, maybe.
Well, the only board members, the camera's right there.
Yeah, okay. Now, you guys can't see it.
Right.
Right. We have our copy.
We have our copy of the map, so...
Does that happen?
I think that's better, I think that's better, so...
Can you see that now?
I hope everybody can see it.
It's not the same.
Thank you.
Okay, so, let me, no, it's not, it's not what you have. I'm going through the history of this, so you guys haven't seen this yet, all right? This is a subdivision map from two thousand. Hopefully, I'm not blocking anything here. So back in two thousand, this was Edgerton Estates, it's a three-lot subdivision that created parcel A over here, parcel B in the middle here, and a parcel C around the back, all right? And then you can see across the top, this is Goodrich Lane. This is how access to these three parcels was obtained. And this is the parcel A that John and Sally Anderson bought at that time, and that's where their house is built. Just to give you a little bit of the location where we are, this is Goodrich Lane, Old Marlboro Turnpike's over here, um, this road comes up, there's a couple of houses along Goodrich Lane here, there's a house over here for Rivera, there's a house back here for Salafia, there's a cell tower in the back over here, and John and Sally live there. This was of Dykes, who lives there now? Dykes' old place? Light, Light lives here, there's a house here. And so, this is what was approved back in, uh, March of two thousand. Uh, and this is recorded on the land records, map twenty-one fifty-eight. So this is the subdivision of the land back in two thousand. So, at that time, there was a question even then about Goodrich Lane and about its status as a town road, and at that time, the town attorney was, uh, Rich Roberts at Halloran and Sage, and he submitted a letter to the town. At the time that, I'll give to you guys as part of the record. Uh, Mr. Casati, I'm sorry, I don't have a copy for you remotely, but I'll read to you, uh, the parts that I'm gonna be, uh, talking about. The important part about this letter is that, at the time, the town attorney said, you know, "We really don't know what the status of Goodrich Lane is. It's an old, old road, it's been around for a long time." "What we do know," he said, "is that the borders of these properties are bordered by Goodrich Lane," all right? So it's not as if this parcel and this parcel shared a border, there's a space between them, there's a lane between them. These properties are said are bordered on the north by Goodrich Lane. These properties up here are bordered on the south by Goodrich Lane. It's always been a road, all right? And although we didn't know at the time in two thousand who really owned it or what the status of it was, it's a road, it's a road that's dedicated for travel, so you can get back to these parcels. And that's what the town attorney decided back in two thousand. And based on that, he concluded that the parcel A, right? Therefore, the deed to Anderson may use so-called Goodrich Lane as a boundary while also granting access over it down the Old Marlboro Turnpike. So, that's what was approved back in two thousand as part of this subdivision. Jump forward to the twenty-twenty-two, and this is the same area, right? Here's Goodrich Lane, here's John and Sally Anderson's parcel over here, here's the remaining property, and they had, uh, sold off, they owned, they owned all of this at one point. This got sold off to Light and Sidney, they have a house there. And this parcel was cut out. This lot line revision creating this lot was approved, uh, by the ZEO on, uh, May of twenty-twenty-two, so just last year, this, the creation of this lot was, was approved. And at that time, a little bit after that, John and Sally went to go get a building permit as part of a sale to, to sell this, this lot, and at that's the time which they were denied, and that's what we're appealing. The basis of that denial, like we said, is the ZEO doesn't feel that there's enough frontage on a town road, right? For some reason, that, they, they believe that the, this is a private road or some sort of discontinued road. We're here to tell you that that's not the case. There's no evidence that this road has ever been discontinued or abandoned. In fact, properties have been built here, the cell tower here, a house here, a house here, right? Over many years, the town has approved development along this road. So there's no evidence at all that this road has been abandoned or discontinued. There's nothing on the town records that it was formally discontinued by action of the town meeting, so that's just not the case. And as far as, uh, it being a private road, that's not the case either. It's a public way, people go up and down it, again, the properties have been developed around it, John and Sally get oil, and the UPS guy, and, you know, everybody goes up and down the road, and they use it as a road. It's a road that's dedicated for public travel to get to and from the rest of the road systems. It is, it is a road. I say all that because in your definitions, I don't know, did Dan, did you pass out the definitions, Dan?
No.
Might be easier for you to take a look at Dan's, the definitions of what a road is in your, in your zoning regulations. It's kinda circular, but road means street, and if you go to streets, the street says see road, and then if you read road, it says see street again. It says, "Street says, 'Any road, highway, avenue, lane, or other public right-of-way dedicated to the movement of motor vehicles, and that is shown on a subdivision plan approved by the commission.'" So that's, that's what you have here. You have a, a lane that's dedicated for the movement of motor vehicles to and from these properties that's shown on a subdivision plan that was approved by the commission in two thousand. Now, it's been a while since anybody's built up there, but Dan and Sa, uh, John and Sally did back in two thousand, and now they're looking to subdivide, or carve out this lot and sell it again, and get a building permit for it. Uh, in his denial, the ZEO did say, you know, in his state, it states here, "Private rights away and discontinued, abandoned, and impassable streets are excluded." Well, like we just described, this has not been abandoned or discontinued, all right? It's continually been used for a very long time as a road, and, and nothing else. It's not a separate parcel to be built upon, it is to be used as a road. And it's, uh, that's what it is. Uh, it is also reflected on your town road list, all right? The town has a town road list with the state of Connecticut that shows all the town-accepted roads. And I'll pass this out to you as well. Because in another section of your regulations, where it describes what a building lot is, it says that such partial, such, such parcel of land shall meet the lot, lot frontage requirements on an approved town road as found on the most current map of the town roads with the Department of Transportation, and that's what that is. So you have, you have evidence that this is a town road as approved by the Department of Transportation, you have evidence in front of you that it's historically been used as a road by the adjoining property owners, you've got several parcels surrounding the road that have been developed and approved as building lots, and, and that's what we'd like to have you interpret these regulations to say now, is that this is an approved building lot because it does have frontage on the town road. And that's pretty much it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So the, the, uh, as from what I understood, it, it was, Goodrich Lane is considered a private road? Yes, no?
No. There's nothing about it that's private. Any one of us can...
Who owns the property, the road stands?
That's a good question, nobody really knows that, all right?
The Andersons don't?
No. Nope. According to the town attorney in two thousand, it was, uh, it's either an old road or it could be the Emma Cornwall, going back a couple hu...
This document actually states that this particular road, Goodrich Lane, which you have checked here, is on the rolls of the town as, as a road.
That's right.
It's a legal road?
Yes.
That, that's what this document says.
That's right, that's from the state of Connecticut's Department of Transportation website that lists all the town roads, and attached to it is a map of the town with all the town roads, and Goodrich Lane is, is right there on it.
So, is a, is the legal determination of a public road, um, established by usage or some other...
There's, haha, you've just, you've just opened up a law school question, that's, uh... So, there's two ways to create roadways in Connecticut. One's by traditional use and, you know, uh, usage over a long period of time, uh, and one is by, uh, actual dedication and creation and acceptance by a town body. So when you create a subdivision, right, and you create a road out of raw land, that's one way of creating a road, right? Or, just, there's these old roads like this road, there's an old road that was used historically, and, you know, somewhere, if you go back far enough, you can find out who really created it and how it was created. And you can kinda tell on some of these, if you look at this old map. It's bordered on either side by stone walls, and it just, it just happened, you know, there's stone walls on either side of it. And that just, hundreds of years ago, the farmers decided that that's where the people were gonna travel and not interfere with the rest of their activities.
On that map, indicate where that road is.
Which map?
Goodrich, the one that you have right there. Is that the highlighted area, is that, is that Goodrich Lane?
Right here.
That's Goodrich Lane?
Yes.
So, the argument is that this is a road by virtue of its usage over centuries?
Yes. Yep.
My, my sense, my sense is they wouldn't have approved that development without having known that is the case, correct?
That's, and I think that's what the town attorney was trying to say at the time, but...
And this is two thousand and one?
Two thousand, this, this map right here is... This is just last year, two thousand twenty-two, the lot line was approved, the original subdivision was two thousand.
And then, at that, at that point, that's when the Andersons, Andersons were interested in buying the property?
Two thousand.
Or their, their particular piece of property?
Yes, the original piece, yes. So we think a fair interpretation of your regulations is that this meets the frontage requirements because it fronts on a town road.
How is, how is the road maintained now?
John maintains it, right, gravel?
It's a gravel road, so it's not plowed or maintained by the town at all?
Is it plowed to a certain point? Town falls to the driveway of this property and the house across the street from that.
Now, is this gonna open up a can of worms where they're gonna, and the town is gonna end up having to pave it at their expense?
Not particularly, not if, the only, the only people it serves are John, Salafia, Cell Tower.
That doesn't mean, that, I mean, that doesn't mean that they can't come back and say, "Hey, this is a town road, it should be paved."
True.
I mean, is it, is it legal, is it by, by town standards, even though it's on this list, is that, is that got legal, is it legally, the width on it legally, legal according to the town specs?
I don't believe so, no. It's thirty-three feet wide, I believe, Dan, what's the...
That's roughly about, uh, we can look on, on the map, but that's, I believe it's roughly thirty feet.
It says Amity Town Square.
I don't believe so.
Yeah. But that doesn't make it less of a road, it just, it's an old...
The, that, by definition, then, how does, how, how does a town determine that this is a private road now? I guess that's my question.
Well, I don't think it has, I think the town's determined that it's a public road because it reports it to the state as a public road.
Am I allowed to ask Dan why you...
Well, so, I, I can give a rebuttal whenever, whenever he's, whenever you're gonna ask him questions, and then you have a response.
I don't...
This is Carrie, Madam Chairman, I can also respond.
Okay. Are you, are you finished?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, go for it, Dan.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so I guess the, the first part, um...
Dan, you need to identify yourself.
Well, Dan Beret, town planner, um, my colleague John Gaskowski is, is on the line, but I'll be, uh, handling this portion. So, I gave you the denial, um, the town, and this goes back five years that we've been dealing with this piece of property. Uh, I know, uh, in the map provided, there was a foundation on there. That goes back to a permit was originally issued for a house on that property, and that permit was revoked, um, when the Dykes has owned that property. Um, it was initially kind of shown to the Land Use Department that that was a town road, and we found out later that it was not. Now, I know, um, per Mr. Attorney Corelli here, that it is on a list for DOT of town roads, but a key component of that list, and this is, this list is partly compiled for funding, for, for funding purposes, for money that the town gets to maintain roads, um, there's a footage of those roads that's demonstrated by the DOT. Now, the town does not claim all of that portion of Goodrich Lane as a town road. As you can see on the map from twenty-twenty-two, this is about where the town has the road ended. Uh, the town considers Goodrich Lane a town road about eight hundred feet from, give or take, from Ames Hala. Uh, Marlboro Turnpike, I'm sorry, Old Marlboro, Old Marlboro Turnpike. So, the town does not maintain, the town does not plow that portion of road past that eight hundred feet. They do drive up and turn around on that private section because it's easier, I believe, but it is, it is maintained privately, and it is plowed privately. The town does not guarantee services there, and I believe that's part of the reason why the town has this zoning regulation, because if you buy a property here in town, you would expect that the town would maintain that, and the town would plow that. Um, you know, if there's a snowstorm, the town comes and plows that. If there was a medical emergency there, right now, it's Mr. Anderson who plows that, and we can't guarantee services there. So that's, that's one reason I feel like this regulation was put in place. Now, um, just to go through, I, I think Attorney Corelli did do a good job, you know, road is a street, and the street is a road. Um, and as I stated in, um, my denial, the town does not consider that a public road, it's private. Now, in our regulations, um, a private right-of-way does not qualify for this. Uh, that's in... Three B, uh, page three-six that I prevent you, article three, uh, three B. No, that's not the right one. I'm sorry, it's in the minimum width definition. So, lot frontage is, is what's on a town road, and we don't consider that a town road. Now, I know, I know he said the DOT has listed that as a town road, but it does not fall in the, in the footage that we consider a town road or that the town maintains. So this is, this has been going on for about five years, um, kind of back and forth with this property. So, so it meets zoning in every other way, but it does not have frontage on a town road. And I, I can provide that information to you, um, if you'd like. Carrie, I didn't know if you had anything to add on that, uh, I know you've been heavily involved in this.
Yeah, and I, and I actually, I have to confess, because it's something I've been using for the back part in five years. I first got involved in the Dykes still own the property, and they had, uh, installed a foundation, uh, hoping to build a house for their son and the neighbors, uh, uh, objected to any construction on that site. And we had determined at that time, based on how everything was configured, that if they used the old wassel property driveway to access the new foundation, they would meet the spirit and intent of the regulations. And that was the very first iteration that was ever provided to me, and that's fact. And that was the very first iteration that was ever provided to me and that's fact again, when the Dykuses sold the property. And the Dykuses went through a couple of iterations after that. The Andersons have gone through several iterations. There is even talk about getting appropriate easement access, et cetera, et cetera. The position that the town has always taken is that there has to be some access to the public portion of Goodrich Lane, which as Dan has pointed out, ends virtually at the old Wassel driveway, which is next to the Dykus' property. So we've always maintained that position with every iteration and every lot line revision that has been proposed. And as I, again, I commend the board for being concerned because one of the major concerns about all of this was the notion that there would be an assumed dedication and acceptance of the portions of this Goodrich Lane that are, do not meet town standards. That would be extremely difficult for the town to maintain, especially after the Andersons' property at the top of the hill and the, the tower, which frankly, in talking to town staff, they don't even know that that tower ever got put in without approval. But as I may, that predates all of us, I think. That is the concern. The town portion of Goodrich Lane ends before you hit the Dykus' house. And so that's, that's the position that we have taken throughout. We have tried to accommodate the Dykuses and then the Andersons in how to build a house on that foundation that would meet the spirit of the town regulations without an assumption that it was a public road to that point. And we've kind of spun in circles for, for a very long time. But I agree with everything that Dan has said. Where this foundation lies and where they intend to access it is not a portion that's considered a town road. And I'll tell you, the neighbors across the street, when Susan Bransfield, this very select woman, when the Dykuses tried to start construction on that foundation based on the notion that they had access to it through the old Wassel driveway, so it was, it was legitimate. The neighbors literally, you know, it's like, oh, it's in it. They sat down and locked off the bulldozers at the top of the hill. And then I got a call from Susan on, on Sunday morning because things were blowing up up there and the neighbors were not allowing the trucks to access the new foundation to continue the construction. And everything blew up from there and it wasn't long after that the Dykuses decided to sell the property and move. So, you know, the history of this is very, very long. The town's position on it has always remained consistent. And that is that beyond the line, the eight hundred foot line that is shown on the DOT map, which equates to the old Wassel driveway, has never taken the position that this is a public road beyond that. And if I can answer any other questions, I'd be happy.
I have a, I have a question. How, how, how can the Andersons access their property without having the frontage? Why, why were they able to build and these people not be, and not be able to not go?
I think, I think that was a mistake made by the Land Use Department in the past. I believe like us, when we first issued the permit to the Dykuses, it was presented to us as a town road. After further research, we learned that no, it's not a town road past eight hundred feet and that's why we revoked their permit.
Now, I, I look at, there's, I live on Freedom Way, which is a private road. And then there's a, a group of houses behind us, up, up off of Thompson Hill Road that has a long driveway and access and so on and stuff. There's at least three properties and I think they actually accessed one from East Cotton Hill Road. Though that's also a private road. How do they figure-
Is it a private road or a shared driveway?
Well, it could be.
So shared driveways are allowed via interior lots with-
I'm looking at this as the same thing.
Well, so an interior lot has a, a dedicated access way. So that is part of the property that they own. And, and as you can see, and what I provided you in three B, on section three six, and then on page three seven, access to an interior lot, three ten four B. The minimum width of an access strip shall be twenty-five feet when issuing concerning the access strip such but not limited safety extra raised. The commission may require the excess of twenty-five feet. And then B says, as an interior plot is defined by parcel of land that's generally behind a lot or lots fronting on a street, does not have required street frontage as per zoning regulation, but does maintain street frontage along the width of the access strip which is owned in fee simple. So that means they own an access strip connected to their property that's connected to the town. And this was one of the solutions that we tried to go through with the Andersons to try to find a way to make this a buildable lot. And that was for them to get an access strip through the property next to the Dykuses owned by the Goodriches, a twenty-five foot strip, connected to that piece of property and that would allow them to have a, a lot that needs zoning. But they have not been able to, to come to terms with the Goodriches on something like that. So as you can see from the map-
That, that's separately owned. If this was owned by that property-
So that, that driveway is separately owned by somebody else?
This is not owned by the town. And as Attorney Corelli has stated, it's, it's, it's not known who owns it.
The town doesn't own it. The town doesn't maintain it. The Andersons are the ones who maintain it right now.
If I may, I think it goes back to the letter that was submitted to you by my colleague, Rich Roberts, who I have the ultimate respect for, but which I disagree with Attorney Corelli's analysis of his opinion, that it is very likely that it be, it was a private right of way for which all of the properties, as things were sold off or leased or whatever, obtained prescriptive rights. And, and again, there is in the past over things that got approved that shouldn't have. I mean, we were floored about this, this tower, this cell tower up there that literally got subdivided without any permits or application whatsoever. So, but as you know, if you don't go active them for three years, then you're kind of stuck under state law. So I go back, I go back to what one of the board members said here. My, my critical issue and the one that is just ringing in my ears since this all started was that there should be no assumption that the town has accepted this road beyond the point at which it has declared a public road pursuant to the DOT, which ends at the Wassel driveway. And so in my mind, again, I personally, you know, whatever the board decides as to whether you want to, you know, uphold the CEO or ultimately down the line, give them a variance, whatever that is, that is up to this board. But critical to your analysis, in my mind, cannot be a finding because there is no legal justification and no factual basis for the town having accepted any portion of Goodrich Lane beyond the Wassel driveway. They have not maintained it. They have not improved it. They have never declared it. They have never accepted it. And so there is actually no legal or factual basis to assume this is a town road beyond the Wassel driveway.
I have a question.
Yeah.
We have a, on this map, it shows the Wassel driveway, it shows eight hundred.
Yeah, my apologies. It's just, I don't know the south. It's just below the Dykus', um, I can't see the map right now.
It's, it's just to the west of the Dykuses' property, Bob.
Thank you. But it literally borders the Dykuses' property.
Where, where is the Dykus', Bob? I don't see it on the map.
Um, if you look at, Bob, if you look at your, your screen, we'll, we'll bring up the map.
I'm looking at the screen. I'm looking at my map, too.
This is what the Dykuses' property here. So this is the Andersons' property in question.
Along Sydney property?
Correct. And then their right of way is right to the left of that.
So who set for eight hundred foot mark? Who set that?
Uh, that was the town Public Works Department. That's the, the feat that they report to the state that we receive state funding for, for public roads. So for every public road that we have, we get funding for, for maintaining those. And a, a footage is associated with every single public road in town so that we get tax dollars for the amount of public roads we have. And in the case of Goodrich Lane, what the, our Public Works Department reports to the state is about eight hundred feet from Old Marlborough Turnpike, which is, is to the point right to the west of, of the former Dykuses' property.
Right. Old Marlborough, where you moved to South Goodrich Lane, you wanted to use the question, correct?
Yeah, so, yeah, just to the west of the, of the former, Dykuses' property. I, I apologize. I, I don't remember the name of the new owners.
When, when did they put in, it's seventy years ago they put in the cell tower?
So, a long time ago. But part of, part of the cell tower that I could speak to is, cell towers are generally regulated by the Connecticut Siding Council. And if they approve a telecommunications tower, they, the state can circumvent zoning. So that, that's how I believe the cell tower got there. As to how the, the property shape around the cell tower got that way, I believe that was part of a divorce settlement. And, and a judge did that, so that one of the divorcees could have the rent rights from the cell tower and then the other person got the rest of the property. So that did circumvent subdivision when it shouldn't have.
Do they, do they use the Goodrich Lane to get to the cell tower?
Yes. But again, we don't maintain that, that section of road.
No, I understand.
So, I'm, I'm sorry.
The thing of it as well, it's a private drive and I'll tell you, because of their configuration, one of the huge issues we had was that the Rivera's claim that they own the travel portion of Goodrich Lane and were trying to obstruct access to the Dykuses' property. I don't, I don't know if the Andersons had a deal with them.
It actually got moved, Carrie. So they, they moved-
I know, I know it has to be. That one, who's it started? When this started, all bets were off, like I said. The Rivera's, um, little attack in front of the bulldozer.
So let me address that, okay? Because this is getting a little off field, but here, let me address that. You can kind of see on this map, the old roadway went around and into the Rivera's property and then it went like this, okay? That's because there was a huge tree right here, okay? And then the Rivera's required an easement for these other property owners to get over their property. And when Dykus started to build over here, Rivera's raised holy hell, like Carrie's saying, and there was a problem, right? Because they didn't want people coming over their land to go onto the roadway, okay? The Andersons corrected that. They released that easement. They, they got that off the land records, okay? Rivera's don't have any rights over there anymore. And Andersons opened up the roadway to allow passage for the public. So it is all public road through here at this point, okay? There's no more easement. And everything that we're talking about here is something that's happened in the past and has been resolved.
But from what we understand, it's only public road eight hundred feet up.
That's the part, that's the part that the town says to the state of Connecticut, we maintain it. That doesn't mean that the rest of the road is not open to the public. And I disagree with Ms. Olson that this is not a public right of way, right? It's always been open to the public for hundreds of years, right? Everybody's border says it borders the old highway. Everybody has parcels on it. It's been developed along both sides of it, okay? It is a roadway. Now, the town doesn't want to maintain it, that's fine. It doesn't want to ask for reimbursement from the state of Connecticut, that's fine. It doesn't take away the property rights of the property owners on either side to have access to it and build across, build over it. So that's, that's our position, that this is a, a public right of way. And it, and, and I will also say that your definition of street doesn't talk about approved or anything approved or dedicated. It says a street is a, a way dedicated for the movement of motor vehicles that's shown on a subdivision plan. That's what was done in two thousand. That's how that subdivision got approved. It's a public street.
No, Attorney Corelli, I'm sorry. I have to-
I know. You, you and I disagree about this, Carrie. I know. We have disagreed for five years, Carrie, so that's fine.
You're not reading the full definition, number one.
Any road, highway, avenue, lane, or other public right of way dedicated to the movement of motor vehicles and that is shown on a subdivision plan approved by the commission. Or that is, or that is a state or town road. Private rights of way and discontinued, abandoned, or impassable, allow me to finish. You want me to read the whole thing? I'll read it. Private rights of way and discontinued, abandoned, and impassable streets are excluded. It's not an impassable street. It's not an abandoned street. It's not discontinued. And it's not a private right of way where other people can exclude others. The Andersons can't block that off and exclude people from coming up and down it as a private right of way. It would exclude the cell tower and the other property owners. Nor can the other property owners exclude the Andersons. It's not a private right of way. It's a public right of way.
Richard, that's untrue. That's untrue. The Andersons could absolutely block it off. Their obligation to the cell tower people is their obligation to the cell tower people. It's not the town. The town has no obligation to be this road beyond that first eight hundred feet. They have never accepted, formally accepted, any responsibility for it. And just because people like the Andersons or the Rivera's or whoever's running the cell tower go up there does not, imso facto, make it a public road. And you know that, Richard. So there's been no, there's been no assumed acceptance of the road and there's been no formal acceptance of the road beyond the Wassel driveway. And you know that.
I, I have another, I have another- I have another question that goes back to the actual approval of the development, which, which is on the town because they did approve it. How would that, how would any, what, how would anybody approve a development without any type of access? Whether it was done twenty years ago or not, the town takes responsibility for that, I believe. Because there should have been, and there, and there should have been access somehow from the road. Whether they made a mistake or not, they still, they still did the approval.
So, did you want to go, I'm sorry?
That's not, that's not authorization compound the problem.
Well, and also-
Okay, so someone, so again, we don't know. None of us were involved when the Andersons' house was built or the cell tower was put up. We weren't involved.
So also, Carrie, if I just, the, the property in question was not one of the three properties that were part of the subdivision. This, this property predates the subdivision and is not part of that subdivision. It's not part of that three lots-
Which property you're talking about?
The property in question that, that the- Right. That property is not part of the three lot subdivision. That, no, it's not. It's not one of the three lots that was subdivided.
No, 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 wait, wait, wait. The three lot subdivision is parcel A, parcel B, and parcel C.
I have another question.
That, that's right.
This lot is awkward here. The house just doesn't have the road built on.
Reconfigured. And then the, this, this is the-
And so let me be clear that it was a pass. I have talked and not do with the Dykuses' attorney, the town staff, et cetera. And I have always maintained that if they were to configure this so that they have access to the old Wassel driveway.
Yeah, this property was originally owned by Wassel. So it's not part of the three lot subdivision.
Excuse me, one person at a time.
Yeah, so, 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 all right. The, but I guess there's a disagreement here. So the town's position is this property was originally the Wassel property. That was not part of the three lot subdivision. I know it sits in that area, but this has gone through multiple lot line revisions in order for them to try to conform to the town regulations, which they have not been able to do.
The land hasn't moved, right? The land, that was part of the subdivision.
But the property lines have.
Part, part of the subdivision, the Andersons owned that, that parcel B. And yes, it's been reconfigured.
But it's not.
But it's, but it's part of that original subdivision.
But it's not parcel B.
It doesn't have to be parcel B. The, the definition of road is that the map shows a road on a subdivision map. That's what we're talking about, the road. So the road is shown on the subdivision map.
But the property in question is not part of that subdivision.
That's right there.
Because it's not lot A, B, or C. It's the Wassel property that's next to it and they reconfigured the lot lines into parcel B.
Yeah, my main concern, and I'm just going to say this, you know, the, the board's going to do whatever the board wants to do. But I would caution you that anything that assumes that you are expecting anything beyond that first eight hundred feet as a town road- that first eight hundred feet as a town road is hugely problematic, because there is a lot of property that goes beyond that. And the requirement of the town to have to approve this, be able to plow it, pave it, grade it, again, we've been going over this for years. And there was a reason the town never accepted this as a public right of way. And now the Andersons publicly have prescriptive rights or other rights to access their property. But just because they use it to get to their property doesn't, imso facto, make it a public right of way. And as Attorney Corolla already admitted, for the longest time, people traversed the Rivera property to get up there. And it was only recent history that they released their rights to go over Rivera's property and reconfigured the private portion of the road from the Wassel driveway to get to their own property. So, again, from my perspective, I, you know, again, I just caution you, because this is the camel's nose under the tent. And it could have huge impact on the town going forward if this board were to, in any way, assume that anything beyond what has been specifically accepted by the town and maintained by the town is a public road.
Can I respond to that? Or, all right, you have a question, but I would like to respond to that.
My question is, does this hinge entirely on whether or not this is a public road? Or is there possibly another way to look at it? Like, for years, they've had access, so is that somehow a recognized easement that could also be used for this other piece of property?
Your regulations, your regulations say you have to have frontage on a public road. That's the basis of the denial.
But there's an interior lot possibility, but that's still some access on a.
Right, right. There's clearly access. And that's the point I was going to make in response to Carrie's concern about this, the camel's nose under the tent. The Andersons, how long have you lived up there? Twenty-two years, okay? Slaffies have lived up there. The cell tower's been up there. People have been using this for a long time without any problem, right? Without any huge concern from the town, okay? It's a publicly traveled road, has been for years. And really, that's all we're asking you to decide. Just make some common sense out of this. I know it's complicated, it's gone through a lot of changes over the years, whether or not it's approved by the town or not, on the town road list. The bottom line is that it's been approved by multiple town authorities for several people to have lots up there and build up there. And all we're asking for is this one as well. Thank you.
Can I, can I, can I ask a question? Is there, has there, has there been a solution or something put on the table to consider it as a private road and being able to use it as access?
They could lobby to change the regulations.
So they would have, they would have to know the planning and zoning to do that?
Correct.
Why hasn't that, that particular plan gone or been suggested to the Andersons or whoever owns the property to be able to do this? Because clearly, clearly, the town is correct as far as eight hundred feet, that's the town road, anything additional is a private way. There's no question about that, because it's not being maintained by the town. But I think, I think they, I think they need to look at it for a solution and trying to figure that out.
Yeah, well.
And that's why I would consider.
Respectfully, we've been looking for a solution, like Carrie said, for five years. We've been talking about this for a long time, trying to figure out how this is going to work. I don't understand why the town won't just accept the fact that the subdivision that was approved in two thousand makes that available to another lot, because that's what your definition says. That's what the regulation definition says.
But I think, I think the town's correct in regard, in regards to the length of that, that particular road.
For the maintain, for the maintenance of it, right. Yeah. Doesn't make it any less of a public way.
The road only goes eight hundred feet. Anything beyond that is a driveway or a private way?
But by that logic, that logic.
Am I right or am I wrong?
I think you're wrong, because by that logic, any unpaved road in town would not be a public road.
No, no, I think, I think that the board member is correct. And the other thing that, Richard, I will agree with, I think, is the fact that we have tried to work with them to figure out a way to legalize this foundation. What I have said and nauseous for five years is retain access to this lot over the Wassel driveway. And, and there have been iterations and lot line revisions and back and forth and, and I'm told there's another twenty acres beyond the Wassel driveway that they might want to be able to reach as well, so they're rejecting or pushing back on that. Again, what I'm saying to you is, this is not a town road. Just because people live at town, use it, and maintain it, and plow it, and grade it, does not automatically make it a town road. I mean, that's just contrary to every legal principle. So, you know, private roads are traversed by residents. Private roads are maintained by residents. And that's exactly what this is. Nobody here can claim that the town has maintained the roadway up to the Anderson's property of the cell tower.
And this, and this is where the dispute is. And nobody can claim that it was been discontinued either, because it's been allowed to be used for years and years.
It was accepted, Richard. Show me where it was accepted.
Show me where it was discontinued. It's the same thing.
Not that it was accepted first before it was discontinued, show me where it was ever accepted, Richard. Again, there's no evidence of it. None. You can't discontinue something you have never accepted. So, again, I say to you.
I've got.
And personally, I obviously don't care if they get to build a house there, but I feel that this board has to really appreciate what's being put forth, is the notion that you are accepting their argument that this is a public road beyond the Wassel driveway, which there is no evidence and no legal principle that supports that conclusion. And that, to me, is scary, because this road, once you get beyond Rivera's, is very, not up to standard. It's, it would be a huge task and monetary burden on the town to bring that up to public road standards. And, and so I just caution you. Attorney Corolla, and I appreciate him, he's a colleague of mine, I like him a lot, but there is no way that he can establish because this road was ever accepted by the town. Not on any legal principle whatsoever.
And Carrie, I respect you too, all right? But I'm going to disagree with you one hundred percent, okay?
I know.
Okay? Your definition, the definition in the regulations talks nothing about accepted town roads, okay? It talks about roads that are not discontinued.
It's dedicated, a roadway dedicated, and it says specifically, private rights of way, discontinued, abandoned, or impassable streets are excluded. It also says that lots be a private town road. I mean, where I told you, it's not a town road beyond that first eight hundred feet. So I, I, again, I'd like to differ with you. Your reasonable definition is clearly, you know, I mean, the board's going to do what the board's going to do, Richard. And I appreciate your advocacy for your client. That's my biggest concern, is grabbing this board, it's so facto, claiming that this is a town road, and there is no evidence that it was ever accepted as much. But, Richard, to me, beyond the Wassel driveway.
Hey, Carrie, I'm sorry. I know we've been going back and forth over this for a long time and I don't want to belabor this, but I, my client just brought to my attention the email that you sent back to me and Susan Bransfield in May of two thousand and twenty-one. And I can't print it out, but I'll read it. Says, Dear Rich, this confirms that you satisfied us, that you have established that there is legal access to the property that includes the foundation and therefore we are not opposed to the lot line revision shown on the map. Whether the availability of access holds true, as you know, is on you. I also want to be patently clear that this is not splitting off a new lot, as you referenced in your email, but rather redrawing lot lines such that in the end, there will still only be three lots in total owned by the Andersons on Goodrich Lane, thirty-nine, forty-three, and seventy-one. We're not approving a subdivision.
Exactly.
Right.
What you, I understand, Richard, is that it's twenty-one? There was a completely different plan in front of me. There have been, I mean, I can't even tell you how many iterations.
Right.
And that's why.
This is the.
I don't even know, I don't even know which iteration we're talking about.
This is, this is the same iteration.
Any iteration that incorporated the Wassel driveway as access, I approve it. Absolutely. Absolutely. So I can't speak to which map that email was tied to, and I don't think you can either. And I've said this to Dan, because this thing hurts us, we had a cam, it's like, Dan, I'm lost. I don't even know what they're proposing anymore, because it's changed so many times between the Dykess's and the Andersons. I mean, and we must have had at least five different maps if not more. And clearly, the Andersons have had, you know, at least three attorneys on this. So I, I can't, I can't speak to which map that, that's twenty-one we now refer to, but I stand by what I've always said. If you guys keep a connection between the foundation and that Wassel driveway, I will support you that you have legal access to a public road.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Matt.
Bravo, Bravo driveway, um, Wassel, Goodrich Lane. It looks like it runs right into the, the seventy-nine Goodrich Lane, is that true?
That's the Wassel driveway, I believe you're looking at.
Oh.
So that.
Wouldn't that be?
What's that?
Wouldn't that be right into the back of the property?
Yeah, it's an easement, it's not, so it doesn't meet the definition of interior lot.
Doesn't that give you access to, isn't forty-three part of forty-four, forty-three? No, the, on the map, she would do outline this.
No, I think that got conveyed to the neighbor as they were reconfiguring these lots.
Oh, well, that doesn't go with.
The Wassel property initially was there, but the lot lines have been reconfigured multiple times.
Dan, is there a solution to this? I mean, there's got to be a way to be able to compromise in the respect that this can be a usable way of doing it. I get denial of a permit based on the information at the moment. And a non-approved thing. Is there a way that these, these, I mean, they own it, they get to and from their house, which they wouldn't have been able to do at the original.
The regulations could potentially be changed. That's up to planning and zoning. We have, I've talked to them most recently about trying to gain that twenty-five foot access strip through the Goodrich's property. They have been unable to do that. You know, my concern to planning and zoning would be, if they were to change this, would be, any person who buys this property, the town cannot guarantee access to them. Mr. Anderson's been very gracious to his neighbors in maintaining the road and plowing the road.
But technically, the Andersons shouldn't have been able to build either.
I agree, but, you know, two wrongs don't make a right.
Well, it's not a matter of being wrong, they, they went through with a development plan, it was approved by the town, so now we got, now we got three wrongs. And then, you know, that's.
I mean, I.
And nobody knows who owns the actual driveway that the Andersons used to get to their property.
All I can tell you for certain is the town, the town does not own it.
Well, I honestly don't think that we, we should act at all on this, on this matter, because it doesn't concern us.
Will you have to decide whether my denial was appropriate or not?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think we do anything, zero, nothing, until somebody can come up with some kind of a plan for these guys to take from the original development plan and make it work.
I disagree, and I appreciate where you're coming from, but what I have to say is this new foundation, and I'm saying new in the, you know, it's now five years, six years old or whatever, was never part of the development plan. That was something the Dykess's proposed after the fact. It caused a great deal of stir up there, and frankly, ran the Dykess's out of town. And as I said before, we have always been supportive of access to this foundation over the Wassel driveway, but they are not willing to accommodate a lot line provision that will secure that. And so, we have, we have really bent our brains to come up with a way to make this work.
So, so, so since the Andersons own the property, if they went and wanted to build a barn on that property for themselves, because they own the property, could they do that?
Are you talking about a barn for agricultural uses?
No, for, for storing cars, for storage, storage, or, and then build, maybe build an apartment and rent it.
You can't build an accessory structure without a primary structure. So you would need a house in order to build a garage.
And they have a house.
They'd have to merge the lots together, they'd have to merge the lots. And then they could, yes, build with whatever, whatever is allowed within the regulations, as long as they don't go over coverage. This isn't the only lot in town that may not have street frontage.
And keep in mind, it wasn't the Andersons that built this foundation, it was the Dykess's.
Right. So, yeah, the Dykess's were the original people, we went through this with, we were, and revoked the permit.
So they put the foundation in without an approval, without a permit?
They, they got a permit, but they had, in their plan, intimated that that portion of Goodrich Lane was a town road. When it was found out by the Land Use Department at the time that it was not a town road, we revoked their permit. And then.
But the original development was, was approved based on that being a town road?
The assumption that that was a town road.
No, no, not that, not the entire development, just this one foundation.
Well, I think he's referring to the subdivision back in two thousand?
Yes.
I don't, I don't, I can't speak to that. I can only speak to the foundation and sitting on the property next to the old Dykess's. And everything that turned inspired after that. The Andersons, the cell tower, the Rivera's, all of that predates by a long shot. And may even predate some of the regulations that apply now and that apply to this foundation may not have applied to the Anderson's property back in the day. I can't speak to that at this moment. I can only speak to what we have been dealing with with this property and the existing regulations for the past five or six years.
I mean, if you, if you feel you need more information, either from us or the Andersons, we certainly can provide that. You don't necessarily have to make a decision tonight.
I honestly don't think we should vote on, period. I think this should not, this should not be before this board at all.
Well, so the, the, the property owners, yeah, they've put a permit in and, you know, it's our obligation to either approve or deny. We, the Land Use Department and the zoning enforcement officer made a decision on a denial. They've exercised their rights of appeal and you're the body that would decide whether we are, the zoning enforcement officer is interpreting the regulations correctly or not. Now certainly, whatever your decision is, you know, either the Andersons can move forward or with the project, or we'll go back to the drawing board with them and try to work, work on a solution. You know, they could come back to you for a variance and, you know, ask for the right to build a house without frontage. That was one of, one of the avenues they could have taken. Rather than appeal the decision, you could ask for a variance to build a house without, without the necessary frontage. That's, that's a possibility. They could come back from you with a variance in the future. They also could, if, if something happens, good, they could secure a twenty-five foot access strip from, from the Goodrich's. And, you know, they won't, we could just do things administratively. So there are other options here. I just want to make sure.
So here's one of my questions now, and I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to get too far deep into it. Why wasn't that suggestion originally given to the Andersons? To begin with, instead of us having, having an hour and a half or an hour and fifteen minutes of talking about something without a solution?
We've laid out options, Dave. This, this was, this was their decision to go the appeal route.
Can I just say something? Dan will not let me go up the Wassel driveway. I had a plan submitted and he would not let me go up there. Carrie's saying yes.
So, so.
You would not. You told me there's no frontage on the town road.
That's my understanding.
I did not go that way.
Now, now, when I met with you and Rich.
No, this is prior to that.
No, but when I met with you and Rich, you had intimated that this was a lot of record. Now, Rich, I, my understanding is you. Now, Rich, I, my understanding is you're gonna talk, the, the, the current lot that you have.
The, the lot line revision?
Well, it's been confused, so originally, Wassel, your, your
It's a lot of record, right?
Right, but I never got information back from you regarding that. I met with you guys, and you were gonna provide me either deed evidence or something like that, that it was a lot of record, and then that would have been a different conversation. I never, I, I was told that you couldn't get a hold of Carrie. I also offered to arrange another meeting with you guys if possible, and, and nothing ever came of that, and then I got the permit in for, for the house, so
Dan, I don't think, I don't think you need to defend yourself based on the, the board's questions. Look, this, this foundation was built by the Dykuses, not the Andersons. And they were very much aware of the strife between the Dykuses and the Ramirez, and, and arguments over access, especially to this foundation, when they acquired this property. So it went into this eyes wide open, and they were likely in for a battle. And so I think it's unfair to suggest, you know, sort of an innocent purchaser, uh, mantra here. And again, we tried to work with the Dykuses, we tried to work with the Andersons, to come up with a solution that would, that would, uh, get them the access they wanted, and none of it was acceptable to them. So I don't think Dan has to sit here and defend himself as to whether he did his job or not, because Dan is definitely above board, and certainly is always willing to work with people, he's tried.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm still, regardless of the outcome, I'm still gonna work with the Andersons, um, to try to get them to their goal. It's just how to get there, so. Again, if you feel that you need more information or more time to, to, to decide what the board would like to do? Right.
You don't have to make a decision tonight, you can leave the hearing open with the submission of additional information, or you close the hearing, and you've got, you know, fifty-five days, or you're in, you don't have to, you know, if you all want to chew on it, sleep on it, do not feel compelled to make a decision, because
I think, I think we should leave it alternate, but Dan worked with the Andersons, and it's not one law.
No, would it mean, would it
Well, there, I would accept the vote, lose the back vote, and therefore, I'm here, so.
Is it, is it, is it simple, is, is them reestablish, or asking for a variance? I mean, it seems, that seems, that seems like, when Dan said, when Dan said that they could ask for a variance based on this, seems like a hardship with the land, we could, we could approve that.
When we, when we spoke, when Dan and, uh, Mr. Anderson and I spoke, we, we thought that this was the better path, because the, the hardship, you know, I, I think it's, it's difficult, right? Sometimes to understand what a hardship is, but, you know, based on what we've talked about tonight, you know, I think there's a hardship here as well. And if we came back with a variance, it sounds like that would be acceptable, is that acceptable to the town? If we were to come back for a variance application?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to limit any of the avenues for the Andersons to reach their goal. Variance was, was, was always one of them, so if, but again, the, the town's position, I guess it's, it's really the zoning, it's your job as zoning board of appeals to decide whether this receives a variance or not. I'm not gonna weigh in in any way, shape, or form, except to maybe, you know, give you guidance on the meeting if I'm at that meeting. So it, it's not, to me, it's not the town's position on whether a variance is appropriate or not, it's, it's whether the Andersons want to seek that avenue for relief.
You need to be very, very careful to not suggest that you're prejudging an application for a variance that's on the front of you. Very careful, they come into you with a variance application, and you ultimately decide that it's, there's no hardship that justifies it, you're putting yourself in peril again, so I just want to caution you, they have an option to apply for a variance, but nobody on this board, including Dan, other than saying that that's another avenue they can pursue, to be suggesting at this juncture that they're entitled to a variance.
Well, he's already done that.
Who? No, I said it's an avenue for relief potentially, but it's up to the board to decide whether a hardship is, is there or not.
There you go.
So, again, if you want to leave it open, I can, I can try to meet with the Andersons, I can try, I can provide more information for you, the applicant could provide more information for you. Um, I, I'd like you to make as informed a decision as possible, um, so, so it's, it's really whatever direction you guys want to take.
Are there any more comments from the public? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Well, so if you, if you, you can close it if you want, but if you want any more information or any more testimony from the applicant, you, you could leave it open, but if you're ready to close and render a decision, you certainly can do that too, um, but
You don't have to make a decision just to close the public hearing.
Right.
Right, right, but if you want more testimony from the applicant, or, or, um, myself, you, you would want to leave it open. And we certainly can meet in the interim, and if, if a solution is found, um, you know, we, we could, we can proceed with that way, either the Andersons can withdraw and resubmit something else, or, um, something of that nature. So it's really up to how you want to approach it.
I'd like to make a motion, Bob.
You need to speak, speak up, Bob.
Excuse me?
I, we can't hear you.
I make a motion that we leave the meeting open, and have the Andersons, Dan, come back with a, a different solution.
Second.
So the motion is that we, um, leave the meeting open, leave the subject open, meet with Dan, and the Andersons?
You, you all, you can't meet with the Andersons and Dan without a, without a public, uh, properly doing a public meeting.
Could, no, could I, no, could I meet with the Andersons?
Right, sorry.
You know, I'm just worried about the way that the motion went out.
Sorry, I, yeah.
Yeah, so I would, I would either just leave the, the motion open, just either leave up the hearing open, or you can close and render a decision, and if you decide to leave it open, I, I will certainly reach out to, to the applicants to see if they would like to meet, um, outside of this forum and outside of the, the, the current application before you.
I kinda think that's what the, the motion was about, to leave it open.
Well, yeah, it's just
That's, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, we just, we just want us to leave out the, the meeting part, leave out the meeting part.
Right, right, somebody want to do that?
Can I make a new motion to leave the question open?
Second.
What was, what was your motion?
Yeah, Carrie, uh, yeah, so you just want to make a motion to leave the public hearing open?
To leave the topic open.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think you're just gonna continue the public hearing, make a motion to continue the public hearing for your next meeting, whatever that might be, and, and have a vote on that.
Okay.
So there's a motion to leave the application open?
Yeah, and it would be to the, uh, March twenty-third meeting.
Twenty-third of March. I'll second it, Kurt already did.
I second.
Is there a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Bob? Bob?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so a motion is carried, and the application will remain open for the next thirty, till the twenty-third of March. Thank you. The next item is the application number twenty-two dash zero-three, one seventeen, High Street, request to appeal a zoning cease and desist order by the zoning enforcement officer that roosters are not allowed on property per zoning regulation nine point seven point one, application and property of David Rutter, assessors map thirty-nine, lot seventy, zone R fifteen. Who would like to speak to this application? I, sorry, I need to open the hearing on this application.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So the, the hearing is now open, does anyone want to speak to this application? Mr. Rutter?
So I'm David Rutter, I bought one seventeen High Street.
And what's your address?
Uh, one seventeen High Street.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I bought this property from Alice Stemler, who was one of the original owners of the Stemler farm. Uh, I think, did you have the copies of the
The deed?
The, the deed and, uh, the Stuffer Historical Society that the Stemlers bought this in nineteen-eleven as a dairy farm?
Do not have that piece of, no, no, we did not, I've got the deed.
I've got the one-two deed, yeah, I don't have the historical society.
My wife's here, my wife's here. So they purchased it in nineteen-eleven from the previous owners, that was a dairy farm. Uh, Alice Stemler, there's still a lot, she was a hundred and two years old. Uh, I bought it from her in two thousand nineteen, and I bought it to continue the farm. So I cleared what was overgrown from, uh, it had malanes farming it up until, I think it was the early two thousands, and, uh, when I bought it, I cleared it off to bring back all the, to bring it back to life.
Please speak into the mic.
Oh, sorry, so I bought it in two thousand nineteen, uh, my brother-in-law owns the property next door, which is the original farmhouse from seventeen oh eight, and so we have the property, my property and his property, which are all properties of the Stemlers, and, uh, so we bought it to farm it. And it was re, it wasn't rezoned, but when they subdivided some of the other properties, they rezoned those properties to R fifteen, and for some reason, this property was farmed until two thousand and eight. Before that, they rezoned it to R fifteen, but it was farmed well after that, and this property pre-existed all the zoning, and it was always farmed way past zoning was ever implemented. So my argument is that it pre-existed zoning, and it's been allowed to be a farm for two hundred years, and I'm just still farming it. So as far as the R fifteen, yes, we're not allowed supposedly to have roosters, but this property was a farm, is a farm, and still is a farm for the last two hundred years. So, and you guys made a decision in early, I think it's two thousand on one, one thirty-eight High Street that had horses, and it's a R fifteen, and you allowed them to have horses because it pre-existed zoning. So you gave them a variance, but my thing is, I don't really think I need a variance, because it was a farm, it should have never, it's always been a farm. So it should, it should never be zoned as R fifteen, because it, it never stopped being a farm. When they made the high school and made Butler Lane, they just blanketed R fifteen, but this pre-existed zoning, so it never stopped being a farm. And we have, uh, I bought Jay, Jay's mother is Alice Stemler. So Jay farmed it, and he'll come up and contest it, it's always been a farm. So I just feel that it's not an R fifteen, because it should have never been blanketed as R fifteen, because it was always pre-existed, and nobody's ever shut the farm down, saying it was R fifteen, so my point is, if it was never shut down, and it pre-existed all the zoning rules, and you already made a ruling on one thirty-eight saying it pre-existed zoning, that my property in one nineteen also pre-exists zoning, which means the rooster thing should not be an issue, because
I'm Sarah Stary Rutter, this is my husband. Um, you'll see in the notes that we gave you, the Stemler farm, it, all of that land, the tunnel, that all the land, there was about forty acres there, that was the Stemler farm, the high school property was Stemler farm, it was donated to the Southwood High School, if you're not familiar with that whole area. But you'll notice in there that the Stemler Dairy Farm operated till nineteen forty, and then it did cease, the dairy farm portion ceased to exist then. But they still farmed with cows, chickens, horses, roosters, because back then you didn't have a local tractor supply, you'd go and buy chicks. You had a rooster, fertilize your eggs, so you grew patients, they had blueberries there, so we're just asking for the same. We're asking, also, we, we would like you to look at the, um, decisions that were made on the one thirty-eight High Street
One thirty-eight High Street.
With regards to pre-existing zoning, and see if ours could be weighed the same way as theirs was, because it was there before zoning, we, we want the same, we're looking for the same, uh, decision as you had done for that one as well. But again, when somebody says, well, how do we know it was, was farmed? Well, Jay's here because he grew up on it, and he bought, he, he sold the property as for his mother, and, um, we were told that it's not a continually operating farm. But I don't believe Mrs. Stemler had, had ever, ever, had ever had an attempt, intended for it not to be a farm.
I bought a farm when she was ninety-nine, and, and my argument is, is once somebody gets too old to actually have the animals or take care of them, does it cease to be a farm and they have to move off of it? So it still consists, considers to be continuously farmed? Or why are, why, why are they forced to move off their family property to, for it to be continuous? Because there, the argument is, it was not a continuous use in the animal. Well, I bought it when she was ninety-nine, I don't expect some ninety-nine-year-old person to walk out there and be taking care of all the animals. But they, the animals were there while they owned it, I mean, I still have all the cold sellers in my basement for when it was farmed. I mean, so the properties all have the farm, it was all. So I don't understand why, I don't understand when, on some of the old deeds, and we have them, it says the subdivided parcels like Butler Lane must adhere to R fifteen, but it never mentioned the farm properties adhering to R fifteen. It was only the subdivided parcels that were taken over by the town and made other properties.
I'm Butler, it's just around Butler, Butler Lane.
So, uh, that was the town, that was the town in the subdivision when they made it. It said the, the subdivided properties must adhere to R fifteen. So I don't know if that's when they blanketed it, but that, we were still farming this property, and I'm still farming it now. And we do, we got a ruling on roosters, but that's why we're here, because I don't feel that it, it, it should be R fifteen, because it's, it pre-existed your zoning, and it's never stopped. And you already made that decision on one thirty-eight.
When was that decision made?
Uh, it was two thousand, it's when was the one thirty, you had that paper?
I was on, I was on the board, yeah, I remember.
Yeah, so you, it
It was, it was probably ten, ten
Ten years ago.
Ten or four years ago.
Yeah, so you, this has already been up here, but I don't think that my property actually goes for a variance, because mine, it's still, it was still a running farm. So I don't know why I would have to go for the variance when it was still a, an ongoing farm.
John, are you wanting to speak?
I, I am, if the commission wishes, uh, for a little bit of background law.
Yes, that would be good.
Okay, so for the record, John, as a zoning officer, um, this is primarily, primarily, uh, a question of roosters. The, the matter at hand is that the, um, the letters own a one point five acre property that was, you know, ad- admittedly subdivided off of a much larger farm, along with, along with the school, along with the property that is further now. Those were all subdivided off the, uh, prior farm property, and was, most of, most of, for, uh, most of the four hundred and twenty-five farm. It's got subdivided lots, got smaller, and now it's, it became a residential. Um, it means that they now own a one point five acre parcel in an R fifteen zone. Um, the regulations, um, section nine point seven, could not be clearer that in, um, the three acres or a rooster. And, uh, in the R fifteen, you cannot have roosters at all. Um, that is, and, and the letters, if they was having roosters, um, they would prefer to let the rooster do the colonization work and not, not get, um, no new checks from the, the tractor supply. Um, it is, and because it is a completely settled neighborhood in the R fifteen zone, um, there are, you know, public health, safety, welfare concerns, nuisance concerns about the way that roosters make, which is why roosters are not allowed in this, that town. that roosters make, which is why roosters are not allowed in the, that town. Um, the simple solution is for the roosters and the Rutter's, we have a good rooster share, so they will have chickens that is allowed on, on property their size in their zone. Um, but, uh, you know, the, 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 it was my opinion that, um, the question of continually operated farm, um, is, um, sort of contradicted by the fact that, you know, the former owner of the farm continually subdivided the property to these smaller parcels. Their house itself was built in nineteen fifty-four. It is not, um, agricultural, uh, it's out, it's, it's only real. Um, and, and, you know, the fact that it once was a farm is a story that everyone in Portland tells. Um, and it is in a dense residential neighborhood. Roosters not allowed, roosters should not be allowed.
Thank you.
You can, John, you can confirm that the, um, the ordinance with that particular, with the one point five acres and certain amount of chickens can, are avail, are able to. Do you, uh, speak to that and confirm why the, why your, um, your cease and desist was, order was in fact given? And, uh, the background, uh, was it a complaint from a neighbor or somebody in the, uh, area?
Yeah, it was, it was multiple neighbor complaints. And, and, you know, the neighbors were.
I was only told that it was.
That area, it's, it's relatively densely settled. Um, not very much difference from the Rutter's yard to the backyard of the houses of David's property. Um, and roosters can be allowed. Which is why it was in the three acres, well. And, and also not in the R fifteen zone period.
Thank you.
How many roosters do you have?
I have one rooster.
Just one rooster?
I, I, I had two. I have one. One rooster can take care of approximately about forty chickens. But my brother-in-law is my neighbor who has the original farmhouse with the original barn. So together we have five acres and all three, all the properties on that street are owned, were owned by three people. Jay, his sister, and his, and his other sister. So they were all, they, they weren't subdivided. They were all given to all the grandkids from their original farm. So they're not subdivided as in, they were subdivided for sale lots. They were subdivided so each kid had a part of the farm and had a piece of land of the farm. So it wasn't really subdivided for residential use, you know what I mean, like Butler Lane was. It was giving the grandkids a part of the farm because they all farmed it as a kid. And they're here to say so.
They can attest to that.
So it's, it's not, even the last property, it's still in all three kids' names. It's not like it was subdivided to be not the farm. It just gave each kid part of the farm. So, so that, that's when, when he says it was subdivided, it was only subdivided to the family, for the family farm. And even in nineteen eleven, it says it was bought by the Stummlers and it was ran by the mother and the three children because the father worked in Middletown. So the three children farmed it all the way up to they, to their adulthood and they all got part of the farm. So it wasn't that it was subdivided for separate house use. It was subdivided so they all had a part of the farm and they could build a house on the farm.
And then they continually sold it. And you would.
That's right, but it's been a continuous farm since then. It, it, and, and I just cleared it and farmed it some more. So it's never not been a farm. Is, is what my ar, what, 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 is why I said, the thought that I, that.
It pre-existed zoning.
It pre-existed zoning. Because I bought it from the people who farmed it and I'm farming it. Ain't like it went through two other people who didn't farm it. It went from one farmer to another farmer to another farmer. And just because it's not in the same family doesn't mean it's not a farm. If you're farming it. And the zoning, if it pre-existed zoning, the one and a half acres for a rooster, it doesn't matter because it pre-existed all those rules. So, I mean, that's, that's mine and if somebody else wants to come up. Because that's where I am. And like I say, there was a variance on one thirty-eight that you guys made a decision. I didn't want to go there.
If I, if I remember correctly, one thirty-eight was in the family. The family, oh, the family still lived in that property. So that's, that's.
Yeah, but it's, it was.
That's where the, the zoning had.
Yeah, but they got a variance for a horse on, on less acreage than I have. They only have three quarters of an acre. I have an acre and a half.
We're not going to argue because.
Yeah, so but.
You can move back to the record and figure that out. But, uh, I, I think, I think right now, if somebody else wants to come up.
Yeah.
Well, good evening. Uh, my name is Jay Stummler. Uh, the Stummler Farm's been in my family for over a hundred years. My grandfather, my uncle, my aunt, my father, my mother has lived there for over a hundred years. And when I was growing up, it's always been referred to as the Stummler Farm. I remember in high school, grammar school, having chickens and roosters running around the backyard. Uh, we had two hundred blueberry bushes, a couple of orchards, uh, four hundred Christmas trees in the back. So it's always been a farm. Uh, okay, I don't remember the cows, they were before my time, but I certainly remember the chickens and the roosters running around when I was in high school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So my, uh, my name is Salvatore Carter. I, I live on, I've been on Fort Butler Lane for eighteen years. There's never been farm there, roosters or, uh, speaking with the neighbors. I've never, they've never said that there was, there's been a farm up in, uh, in that area. Um, as far as my property, I, I got only put four one acres and goes along the side of the rudders. A hundred feet from there is where the roosters are and the chickens. It's too close. Uh, my wife works from home. My daughter's taking chicken, uh, my, my daughter's taking UConn classes from our, from our house. Uh, we have to hear these things screaming all the time. Uh, they've been, they have been, they try to put collars on them and stuff like that. So it's been a little bit lower, but there's, they still make a lot of noise. Uh, I, I don't think that's very considerate of, you know, I don't turn my speakers up, uh, my stereo system. It's just, it's just too close to have these kind of things. The Rutter's have told me multiple times that their property is a allowed farm, but I've spoken to John, the zoning officer, and a lawyer, and they said that that's a no zoning area. So, that's where I, that's where I stand. Thank you.
If I, if I might, can I, can I, Chair?
Yes.
I don't know if it's possible to share the screen. If the commission or the board is familiar with, uh, with some of the subtle density of that area?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, um, I'm just going to bring up an, 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 uh. Uh, can you see this?
Yeah.
Um, and then you can sort of orient yourself, but if you sort of took a, took a quick look at this and asked me to pick out the property that, that apparently the applicant's claim has been continually farmed, um, I would, I would advise I could pick out the correct one. Um, here's Butler Lane, here's the school. This is the property in question, it's subdivision law. Um, and, and the, the entire density of the area is, you reflect, you know, the, the way that the regulations for R fifteen and regulations for animal agriculture have been created, um, to prevent this sort of neighbor disturbance, uh, in something that's specifically settled with residential area. Um, that's, that is the reason for the roosters. Again, that is not, that is the reason. Chickens are still allowed, um, but, you know, there's, there's other types of chickens that are, that are used, but roosters just don't make sense, uh, in regulations.
Can, is that good, Chair?
Can you leave it up?
Can I speak again? Long, long pre-record, I don't get to have to say that. So, the property that we're talking about, this is my house. My property line starts here and ends here and goes over to here. Uh, my brother-in-law, who's also part of this, this is the original barn. This is the original, his property line runs all the way over here and comes all the way over here. It's almost five acres in total. Still not to the farm.
No property is a property in question.
That's correct.
No property is among the.
That is correct.
The brothers.
But the chicken, the chickens are here. It's a hundred and twenty-five feet to here. And then it's another almost hundred feet to here. So from his house to my chickens is almost two hundred and twenty-five feet.
Yeah, they're right, they're right.
So, 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 and, and again, I, I understand the chickens, but I, I think it's more the hens laying eggs that they're, because roosters don't crow all the time. But when a hen lays an egg, it makes a ruckus. So I don't think the rooster is really my big issue here. That the chickens are going to be the issues no matter what. And I understand that, you know, he, he don't think there's consideration. I used to let them out before I went to work, which is six o'clock in the morning. Now my wife don't let them out till almost nine thirty, ten o'clock. They're in the hen house until nine thirty, ten o'clock. So me, him, people saying I have no consideration, I mean, I don't let the animals out till nine o'clock. I can run a D eight dozer. I run heavy equipment from seven thirty in the morning to nine o'clock at night on my property if I wanted to, according to noise ordinance. And like I say, this, it's been a farm for over a hundred and some years. This, it all used to be the farm. The town got this for the high school. The church got this from the Stummlers for the church. This is the property. This neighbor has another three acres and Jay's still, and his aunt still own two acres on the corner. That they might have, we keep saying it was subdivided. It was given to the grandkids, not really subdivided for sale other than the farm. So when we say it was subdivided, I want to make sure everybody understands. It wasn't subdivided for sale. And when people sell off some of their farms, it's sometimes because they need to take care of people in the family and they have to sell off parcels. When the town took this and left them this, because when this was the original farm, it was this house and this house. That was the whole street. Then the town got this for the high school. Then the town had this, so it had the back access. So they cut the farm up for the high school. So what's the sense in having a farm that goes across this road and not just get rid of the properties in between the two houses that they can't do nothing to? So when the town took the stuff and made roads, they were forced to sell some of the farm because they couldn't do some of their stuff. But these properties were always farmed by the Stummlers for the last two hundred years. So it wasn't that it was subdivided due to any other fact that the town was taking stuff in easements and building roads. Because at one point, my property had a five hundred foot here because they didn't want the, the school to be able to have a road going out to High Street or William Street. So they kept a lot, a big strip, because the town kept taking land from them and taking, taking away from the farm. Now, just because the town wants to grow, doesn't mean that this hasn't been a farm for two hundred years. And all we're trying to do is keep it to where it is. It's a hobby farm, it's almost five acres. My parcel is an acre and a quarter, acre and a half. And the chickens are right on the line because my brother-in-law's part of this. And he's sitting right there too. He can contest to this.
On our line, not on sales.
And, and not on sales line. And I'm three, I'm almost two hundred and some feet from the back parking lot of the school and I'm three hundred feet from the road.
You guys could come over and see how close they are. You're welcome to come over.
Why, you know, my lot's a hundred and twenty-five feet wide, I know it is.
We're good, we're good.
Can I say one thing?
Sure, go up to the podium, chat with us.
I'm John B. Sterry Junior. Um, if you all know me, I've lived in town all my life. Um, currently reside at one Highland Avenue. Uh, but I have the, the original farm at one nineteen.
What's that?
One nineteen, um, that I will be moving to. Um, I've known the property. Dad was a Lutheran forever. I know the property from playing out behind there. Um, I know our zoning enforcement officer, John is it? Uh, said there are multiple complaints. I want to see multiple complaints. We, we are only aware of one, one neighbor. I will say that shortly after my brother-in-law bought the property, there was a tremendous windstorm, made a mess of the trees all along the, the property line uh, to the people along Butler Lane. My brother-in-law's got a heart this big. He went over there, he cleared all that stuff, he hauled all that wood off. He left it neat as can be. He's a good neighbor. Um, now, uh, as I've done some work on my property, which as he said is, was the original farm, there was a gutter in the barn from the cows uh, that I've removed to, to level out because you can't put a, can't drive a lawnmower through there. But, um, we want to make it better. Uh, we want to, we want to, uh, get back, my sister's a chef. Uh, she can cook about anything. And, uh, we want to get the blueberries back. The pear tree is a little sorry at the moment, but, uh, uh, that's, that's our goal, you know? So, um, if you have any questions for me, I'm glad to answer them. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, definitely.
If the rooster were to move onto your property, how far away would, which is allowable? Because it's three and a half acres by my calculation. How far away?
It would still not be allowed, um, I'm sorry, it would not be allowed because it's still in the R fifteen zone.
But, but, but again, the R fifteen zone. The R fifteen zone was pushed upon these, this property because of development again on Butler Lane. The school and the town of Portland have benefited from the Stummler family for many, many years. One seventeen has a basketball court in the garage, which the school was, I believe, free to use as necessary when they wanted to practice out of the courtesy of the Stummler family. I will say that on top of this, with the advent of the new tennis courts, and I, I, I graduated here in nineteen seventy-six, these tennis courts were not here. This parking lot was not here. There is a retention pond here, but I will tell you that I've just spent twelve thousand dollars to put a drain in because we can't handle the water. Now, with this being paved and this being paved, the water doesn't penetrate anymore and disperse naturally. There's a pile of water that comes down.
Excuse me, can I, can I? I'm not sure, I'm not sure this, this, it doesn't, doesn't apply to anything that we're here for.
Okay.
And, you know, at, at this moment, you're just extending the meeting.
Very good.
I appreciate that, John.
No, I'm sorry.
But, uh, it's, it's getting to the point where.
No problem.
We, 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 we understand both sides, I think, uh.
Okay. Any, any further?
No, but thank you. Any more comments? Testimony?
Madam Chairman, this is Carrie, and I would just say, um, one thing. And again, I, I, I take no position on, on obviously whether the rooster should be allowed to stay or not. Uh, but I just wanted to confirm multiple premise that has been asserted, which is the fact that this is not a true subdivision. It was a conveyance property to, uh, family members of the Stummler family, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but I think, to state the obvious, uh, it really is a subdivision. These are separate lots, separate homes, and any single one of them could convey their property to somebody outside of their family. Um, I, I, again, without any other information, maybe they could provide something that says they have no right to convey the property and revert back to the family. But from what I understand and based on the fact that the individuals who are speaking here tonight are not of the Stummler family, these are truly subdivided lots, um, to John's point. And so I think the board should be aware of the fact that whatever decision you render could effectively follow these properties into perpetu, into perpetuity. And again, I'm not making a judgment call on that, but I did want to, you know, just make sure you understood as a legal premise, subdivision is a subdivision, and that these are separate lots. Uh, there's something that prevents them from being conveyed, uh, forward to somebody who's not of the Stummler family.
But Carrie, can I, can we, uh, confirm that? But Carrie, can I, can we, uh, confirm that they're separate lots, so they have separate property lines? So they, they equi- they're equivalent to what John has said, one point five acres or three point whatever? What, whatever each particular? However you want, I mean, and, and at the, at the point that the, the, the family doesn't own it any longer, doesn't, now makes it a different animal.
No, I, I was just trying to grasp the fact that I felt that what was being suggested was that this was not a true subdivision. This is the family coming together to continue to work the land of the farm, um, you know.
But that's not, that's not true.
Right, they, they may be a budding property, but they are distinct lots from my understanding.
And not owned by, and not owned by the original family.
Exactly.
Which I believe, I believe the, the case that they stated earlier, um, what'd you say? One thirty, one thirty-eight, one thirty-eight, hi, hi?
Yes.
That, that was the premise of, of approving, uh, the allowance there because it was, it was family-owned all the way through. So, so that's, that's where I was going with, with, uh, that as far as the lot changes.
Under- understood, and again, I only, it was the legal premise that was through my ear and then you feel that I should be clear with everybody in case there was any confusion. These are separate parcels, separate houses, separate lots. And it can be conveyed to you or me or John or anyone. So, um, I just, I just didn't want that, the notion that this was, quote, "not a true subdivision" to weigh into your decision, because I, I, I beg to differ with that.
Okay, uh, can I move your remarks to that?
Sure.
Okay.
So on to one thirty-eight, that you said it was the family, sorry to get up here.
It's not, it's not the decision.
No, 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 I understand it.
That's not what we're talking about, so.
So on one thirty-eight, you gave them a variance. A variance, so you, you made that decision based on that it was, the family had the property prior to that and that's why you granted that variance. Now the variance stays with that property whether it's sold outside their name, it, because that variance stays with the property. So they could sell it to me and I could go to that property and put a horse on it. The, the variance stays with the property if I'm not mistaken, ma'am.
This isn't a variance.
That's right, but what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is-
That wasn't a variance either.
That wa- well, in the paperwork, it's a variance, and, and, and their record-
It was a decision based, based on the same as what you're hearing.
That's correct, but that is a, in their record, it's a variance and it goes with that property because I discussed that with John. That stays with that property, so no matter who they sell that property to-
If it changes hands from, into a different family, it does, it does not go with it.
Well, that's not what I was told. And that's what John is, under the assumption, that that stays with that property. And that's what my assumption is. If mine pre-exists zoning on one thirty-eight, if they can sell that and they can still have a horse on it after they sell it out of the family because you made that decision, then I'm in the same situation except for mine was the family farm and me and my brother-in-law bought it from the family. So if they're, if, if they can, if they can clarify that one thirty-eight, if it's sold outside the family, it don't have a horse, I could understand that. But they're telling me it goes with the property no matter who owns it, your decision stays with that property.
That's not true.
That's not what I was told by the town. And that's why I'm making this argument, because it's, it's, that, the town said that that variance stays with that property and that property alone, and it doesn't matter who owns it. So if that's the case, then me buying it from Jay's mother who originally farmed it shouldn't matter because I'm buying it from the farmer and farming it that pre-existed the zoning. So if you can clarify that, I will understand that. But if they say it goes with the property, then I would say that my, my stance is correct that if it stays with the property, it won't matter whether I, they sell it out from the Stemmers. I bought it from the farmer, it still should be the farm.
Madam Chairman, if I may, um, I appreciate what, what he's saying. If in fact there was a variance granted to someone on a different property for a different purpose, whatever the scope of that variance is, would run with the land because it's a hardship, right, that was established. I think we need to be careful here though, that the review tonight is not a variance application. It's a question of whether John properly determined under the existing regulations whether there was a violation. Um, and, and they should cease and desist. So again, as with the prior applicant, if they want to come back for the variance application, you can consider that on its own merit and determine whether there's a hardship. But, um, but whatever happened needs to be a variance on a different property. Variances are unique to every property because every property is unique. So there's no such thing as precedent when it comes to variances. Um, and again, I would just remember that the scope of your review tonight is what John practiced, his analysis, and application of the regulation.
And I agree with that, I, I agree with that. My thing was when I went and seen the lawyer, my lawyer, he said, because this property pre-exists zoning and they were still farming it when I bought it, the zoning does not apply to these properties because we bought it from the people who farmed it. And because you play, in place zoning on top of a property that's already farmed doesn't make that property covered by that zoning, which means they should be able to have the animals that were on it ever since it's been a farm. So my, my question, that, that's why I came here. I think what I'm asking is, is for you guys to decide whether this property pre-existed zoning as the original farm, I bought it from the farmer and I'm farming it, and then the zoning doesn't apply to these for the farm animals that I have. Because if the zoning don't rule, apply to these for the farm animals that were on it, then I'm not against the zoning rules. So if you say that the property, like he said, doesn't go because the family still doesn't own it, then I would have to go for a variance. But if the, it stays with the property, if it's been continuously farmed, I brought it from the people who were farming it, I'm farming it, there was not a break in farming, that it still pre-existed zoning of farming, which means the animals are allowed to stay that were on the farm that pre-existed the zoning rules. So I guess what I'm asking is for you guys to make a decision or, or actually decide whether these, that this pre-existed zoning and the animals that were on it can be on it because of zoning, you said the other one, it stays with the property. Well, this property has never stopped farming. So it should pre-exist zoning and the animals stay on it. Because if she was seventy years old and I bought it and had chickens on it, it would be the same thing. Just because she got too old and couldn't keep the animals doesn't not, it stopped being a farm. You know, if she was a hundred and two, she, what she is now, if she can't take care of the animals, you wouldn't want somebody to have the animals on there. But she farmed it and I bought it for her. So that's where I'm looking at, that it was always a farm. So if you make the decision that it wasn't, then I would have to go for a variance. But I don't think that the, the zoning rules applied to this because it was always a farm.
John, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I, I just, I just wanted to clarify that always being a farm, um, is, is sort of a loaded expression. Um, because clearly, the, you know, the farm became some of the smaller parcels. Many of them are not farms, one of them is a school, one of them is a church. Um, several of them are small subdivision lots. Um, there was, yes, yes, there was farming there in the past and, you know, the, the most recent owners, they had chickens. Um, that doesn't mean that all farming rights convey the infinitely small subdivision lots from the original farm. Um, and in this case, the properties were developed, zoning was put into place. Um, and the R, R fifteen, um, you cannot have a rooster, you cannot. Um, it's, it's, you know, this is a one and a half acre subdivision lot. His, his brother-in-law and his daughter with three acre subdivision lot could have, um, a larger animal. Um, and, and, you know, both can continue to have chickens because the regulations allow that. The regulations do not allow, lock all that size in that zone to have roosters. And, and, uh, the, the history back to the midst of time for an original parcel like John, it, it is not relevant because the property has been lit and conveyed and lit and conveyed. Um, and, and as, as the neighbor on, on, on Butler Lane, you know, um, classified, uncontested, is that the eighteen or seventeen that they're having to do? Um, they should not be disputed.
Thank you.
One more thing.
Okay.
When I cleared that lot, when we, um, when we had that storm and I cleared that lot, every one of my neighbors said they haven't seen that house in thirty years. So how would they know? Because I cleared thirty-footed trees off that property line because they all fell down during Isha. So if they haven't seen that lot in over thirty years, they didn't even know all the stuff that was over there. So when they say, well, there wasn't a farm over there, they haven't seen it in thirty years, then how do they know what was over there? I had one person come on, well, they said, well, we, we seen all the stuff on your property. And I was like, well, that's pretty funny because you can't see behind my house from the street. So who'd been walking on my property? You know what I mean? So, I mean, I understand Sal's, Sal's complaint. And, and I don't, and he can, he can do it. And, and again, we've had the conversation, you know, about rights. He says, you know, I have rights. And I says, yeah, normally they start at your property line and then at your property line. And my rights for my property start at my property line and then at my property line. So I understand his complaint, I'm not arguing about his complaint.
Hey, my wife works from home.
I understand that, but, but I'm just saying, I don't, I'm not arguing the complaint. I'm just saying, I understand the complaint. But if I have the right to do what I want to do on my farm, people just got to understand that. People have the right to play their music if they want to play music. If it's on their property, it's on their property. What's going on with my property is my property. And if it pre-existed zoning, I'm allowed to have the animals, I would just like to have the animals. Is all I'm saying. And like I say, the rooster, I feel that the rooster should be allowed because it pre-existed all the zoning rules. It had it. And it should, and I understand that we changed it to R fifteen. But if it pre-existed that and all the half-acre lots, yeah, they don't give roosters. But if, if it's pre-existing and I'm allowed to have it, then I should be allowed to have it, that's all I'm asking. If it pre-existed, and he, and like I say, I understand John's point too, I respected, respected that out of him. But I still think that if it pre-existed zoning, and, and I understand his argument that it kept getting chopped down, but they had multiple kids. So, and all three, even the last lot, is still in all three kids' names. So it ain't like it got chopped up, it got, it was given to all the grandkids to farm with all three names on the property. It's not being chopped up, it's given to the kids. The kids have to choose what to do. When I got my property, it, the kids had to decide that I could buy the property. I bought it for males because when they chopped it up, all the main part of the farm was all three kids' names on it. Each kid had their own piece. And all the rest of the pieces of the farm, because it was subdivided long before nineteen seventies too. Because there was like ten parcels back there that were sold off to the Stemmer farm. It wasn't just one big thirty-four acre lot. There was multiple lots that made up the farm. So it wasn't like it was just subdivided in the seventies. It was subdivided long before the seventies. They just bought all the lots and all three children, all the farmers that were involved had their name on each lot. So not one person owned each lot, all the family members owned it. We have all the deeds, all three family members are on every lot. And there was multiple lots. So it wasn't subdivided for sale, it was all the, separate lots with all three kids' names on it. So I understand what he's saying, but it wasn't subdivided that way. Because if it was subdivided that way, it would have one person's name on it on each lot. This has all three children's names on every lot. Because it was all put together to be the farm. And that's how we know that it was the farm because all three names are on it. It wasn't one kid where it was like, I gave this to Jay, this one to Jay, this one to his sister, this one to his sister. All three family kids are on each lot. So it wasn't subdivided except to be part of the farm with all three kids having a equal share.
Thank you. Does any, um, is there any more testimony? Does anyone want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion. Pardon me?
Bob, Bob seconded it.
Okay. Okay, the, the public hearing is closed. Um, the only people who can speak are we as board members. I think no more testimony can come from the public. Does anybody want to make any comments?
Well, personally, I've had roosters. When we moved to our house in nineteen eighty, we had a rooster and chickens and three-
Are you speaking in the mic?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, yeah, there we go.
Personally, I, I think that-
Can you hear her all right?
People could, I think it's great that people want to have chickens and roosters. Um, and I wish that it, the zoning wasn't three acres and it had to be not R fifteen. We have roosters in our neighborhood and they start at four-thirty in the morning, they go all day. I don't care personally, but I see that, you know, you're supposed to have three acres for a rooster and it can't be R fifteen, so. I, I feel for you.
And I, we have two and a quarter acres and chickens and, um, we got a rooster by mistake when it came in with the, to the post office. Um, it was one of the most obnoxious birds I've ever met. And my neighbors didn't complain, but we're farther apart. And actually, there were some incidents where, um, the neighbor's dog would start barking at four in the morning as soon as the pup, rooster, came up, anyway. So I got rid of the rooster and, uh, I don't really want a rooster anymore. But I also, I, I agree with John that this is um, an R fifteen, more densely populated area of town and I don't think it's appropriate to have a rooster in that area. If that property had been twenty-five or thirty acres and was, you know, aggregated so that it was one property, um, I, I might think differently. And I also think that maybe you could go to the, go to the town, go to planning and zoning and see about changing that R fifteen status. I think I suggested to you before, David, that you might talk to the Connecticut Farm Bureau.
Yep.
And see if they can help you come up with a solution. But I, I really don't think that you should do roosters right now.
Can someone remind me when it became an R fifteen zone? Sorry, um, I was just wondering if someone can remind me when the R fifteen zoning was established for that area? Did we, did we hear that anywhere? I don't know if it's even relevant, I'm just curious. When things can change over the course of history.
Well, we can't hear from the public, so it's up to us.
John, can he tell me?
Nope, nope.
Can't tell me either?
No.
Okay, sorry, should have asked before.
My, my honest thing is, is, you know, you know, I understand because it's, it's, it's definitely a culture change when you're, when you're leaving a quote-unquote farm which is now, because somebody else owns, owns it, it's sub, it's subdivided now to, to a different person, so. That doesn't, that doesn't apply and the, the ordinance is, is, is really clear about the rooster thing um, within that particular amount of property. I would, I would say we have to uphold the cease and desist and deny the appeal. And John's cease and desist would, would, would stand.
Anymore?
No, I guess not.
Bob, any, anything from you? Bob, any, anything from you?
Uh, just to add, I'm, I'm trapped, we're really here to, I, um, this law, when I-
I'm sorry, say what you, I, I didn't hear what you sa- you said?
I said, I didn't, I'm trapped, we're here to decide the cease and desist order, not anybody's personal opinions about chickens or roosters, so she blows out the back of the issue.
Okay. We agree. I, um, make a motion that we I don't know how, how, how this should be worded, that we, um...
Deny the appeal.
Deny the, deny the appeal of the cease and desist, and uphold the cease and desist, and let it stand in order? That cover it? Carrie still out there? Bob seconded. So we're denying the, the appeal of the cease and desist, correct? Is that, is that prob- would that be right? In the sense that
No, I think-
We're upholding the cease and-
We're, yes, we have to, we're, we are going to uphold the cease and desist order.
How should that, Carrie, how should that be worded?
Yeah, so that, that would be fine, um, as you probably know, it takes four out of five of you to overturn the, the ZEO's decision. So it would be a motion to uphold the ZEO's decision.
Okay.
Which would have to be seconded and then voted.
Or, or would it, would it be proper to say we are denying the appeal?
You could, you could also say that, um...
Because that's what they're here for, is to appeal the cease and desist, correct?
Right. But, uh, so this gets really kind of wonky.
Yeah, I know.
But if there's a motion to deny, and you don't get the vote, then where are you? You have to turn around and file, head to a motion to uphold. So you would just, well, just jump right to the motion to uphold?
Okay.
And, right?
Just making sure the wording's correct. So, so if I reword my, my, uh, my motion, I make a motion that we uphold the ZEO's request for cease and desist?
Correct.
On application?
Right.
Whatever the app-
Twenty-two point zero three. Twenty-two dash zero three, one seventeen High Street.
Okay. Twenty-two dash zero three, one seventeen High Street.
Correct.
And then you need a second?
Second, Bob Kasati.
Bob Kasati.
And then, if there's any additional-
Any more comments?
No.
No comments, then we call for a vote?
Exactly.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes to the motion?
Yes to the motion.
Yes to uphold?
Yes to uphold.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Joan Geisman, yes?
Yes.
Bob Kasati?
Vote to uphold the motion.
So that's a yes?
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Motion carried.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Do we have to sign it? Do we have to write, do we have to write to uphold?
Yeah, yeah, I've got a recorded vote, I've got to do all of that. All right. Next order of business is new business, is there any new business?
No, it says no.
None. Old business, um, adoption of the minutes for the regular meeting of October twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two. Is there a move, is there, is there any discussion on those minutes? Any corrections? You're gonna get, you're gonna get your- You should have come in your packet. Pardon me? Yes, because they've been seated as alternates. Because we didn't have-
Well, I was seat, I was, I was seated on that. And Bob was-
Bob is seated.
Joan was seated, and Jack, three of us can vote, yeah.
Right.
You guys can abstain, I guess.
I guess I'd say-
I'm in favor of the, than it's a good-
Okay. Is that what you meant?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think because they're seated as, as voting members.
So they can abstain, and we can still get three votes, and that's still a majority.
I just need to know what's putting in this. It's getting late.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll just abstain. You abstain.
I'll abstain, too.
Okay, two abstentions.
Yes.
Okay.
Because they were not-
You in favor of approving the minutes, Bob, of October twenty-seven?
The two ladies are saying?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Is there any correspondence? Anybody got any private letters, or?
No, I'm sure after this one, somebody's gonna hear from Jack.
Any public comment? Everybody's left. Is there a move to adjourn?
I make a move, a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Recording stopped.
We adjourned at nine-thirty.